Mr. President, Secretary of State, this meeting has been publicized and going to open up the public meeting.
Yes, Your Highness.
Everybody please join me in the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. O'Connell, we have some presentations to see.
Yes, first one, I'd like to call up Ms. Pelican, if she's here, and Ms. Brady, and Mr. Aguilera, if he's here, 155 percent. Oh, okay. Oh, you want us to, well, you want me to wait? We could do the attendance first. How's that? All right, we'll do the attendance awards first, and we'll wait for Mr. Aguilera. Mr. McEnam, here is the list of perfect attendance, which I will help you out. First of all, I would like to congratulate all the recipients. We probably had about 50 or so people throughout the district that had perfect attendance, that means no absentees of any kind, personal days and/or sick days, which is awesome. And we're going to start with the one-year perfect attendance. Unfortunately, some of the people couldn't be here, but these are the people that are here. And if I butcher some of the names, Doreen, please don't get mad at me. Doreen...
Kansamano.
Kansamano.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Kansamano. Congratulations. You were easy to yell. Brian Donigan. Great job. Thanks a lot, I appreciate it. Rachel Gelfand. Rachel? Rachel, come here. Okay. Lisa Green. Thank you, Lisa. Christopher Howard. Good job, Chris. Thanks a lot, appreciate it. Mr. Lembow will come up and give Amy Lembow her award. Congratulations. Good job. Great job, thank you. Mike McGee. Mike, nice job, thank you very much. Darren Alvin. Good job, Darren. Thank you very much. Dominic Provenza. Nice job, thank you. Michael Provenza. Stanislava...
Melkut.
Where's Melkut? Where's Stan? Sorry. Lori Rosen. I really cracked that, too. Can't get the word out of my mouth. Lori, nice job, thank you.
Teacher of the year and perfect attendance.
That's right. Diana Russ. Good job, Diana. Thank you very much. Richard Tola. John Wojcik. Two years perfect attendance. Ms. Bonnie Brady. Congratulations, Ms. Brady, thank you very much. Jojo Gazinski. Good job, Jo. Thanks a lot. He likes coming to work, yes. Stacy Mon. Congratulations, Stacy, good job. Susan Strack. Good job, Susan.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Carla Sutherland. Palmer Van Gaan. Good job, Palmer, very nice. Thank you. Three years perfect attendance. Emilio DeAndrea. I've got to give him two minutes.
Better come to work. I've got to deal with him all the time. He gave you a certificate just for that.
Benjamin Isabella.
I could rip my arm off, I might.
Good job, Jonathan. This is five years perfect attendance, five years. Jared Langley. Five years. Congratulations. That's it. Oh, that's what happened. She had to go get married. We will, we will, we will straighten that out, if you can just give us, all right, that's cool, sorry about that. Should have gone married after the wedding. Okay, the next recipient, and I've known Ms. Pelican now, I guess it's 11 years. And Ms. Pelican and I, I started in the middle school, she was a Spanish teacher. And I always remember that she worked very diligently, did a very nice job, and then they moved her to the Sampson Upper Elementary School. And I'm going to let Mr. McEnam, President McEnam, talk a little bit about why she's going to come up. And then, Ms. Brady, why don't you come up with Ms. Pelican, so I'm sure you'd like to say a few words as well.
Come on up.
Come on up. I'm assuming you don't need...
Deborah, congratulations. This is a certificate of appreciation, as presented to Deborah for her quick actions and heroic efforts that resulted in saving the life of one of our students. And this is just a perfect example of being a teacher. When you're in a classroom in front of a bunch of students, you kind of play the role as firefighter, chaplain, and coach, and the amount of time... The amount of time that you have, 50 minutes or so, to put the smarts into students' heads, you always have to be prepared for something that would come up. In this instance, a student was choking, and you properly administered the Heimlich movement. And what's interesting, you know, the student's very lucky that you were in that class, and not only knew what to do, but were willing to do it. And for that, you have my personal and professional admiration and appreciation. And it's on behalf of the Sable School District and Dr. O'Connell, that I'm very proud to present this certificate to you.
Thank you very much.
Will you send me that picture? Good job.
Good job, Deborah.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and the correspondence. Everybody should have a copy of the agenda. Last meeting, Mrs. Gelfand, she made a comment that the use of the computers, which was fine for us, because we're familiar with the agenda, was too fast a pace for those who have not seen it, so everyone should have hard copies, and we'll continue to do that, that was a good suggestion. The next thing we have is correspondence, everyone on the board should receive via electrons, the monthly technology work order reports, and the monthly maintenance work order reports. Does anybody have any questions or comments about those two reports? If not, I will move on to minutes. Everybody should have received copies of the August 17th and September 7 minutes. Does anybody have any comments, questions about the minutes? If not, I'll take a motion to accept and file the minutes.
So moved.
Second motion?
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
I also have a correction or clarification.
Go ahead.
Mr. DeAndrea, the August 17 minutes on page 18, with regard to the board's intent on the superintendent's contract, there's some people who have either voted no or abstained, and the comment is in there, but it's unclear what item it refers to, whether it's the weapons systems. If we can just say...
We're going to honor the following.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table.
Mr. Backler?
Yes.
Mr. Backler?
Yes.
Mr. Berto Recuya?
Yes.
Mr. Sayak?
Yes.
Ms. Lembow?
Yes.
Ms. Pratt?
Yes.
And Ms. McEnam?
Yes, Dr. O'Connell, will you take us through the report?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I guess this computer, we've got to do the... Okay. It's the first one since school start. I'm sorry, I have a student council representative, our new student council representative is Terrence O'Connor, he delays on between the student body and the Board of Education, and I might add that this is an elected position that his peers have chosen for. So, Terrence, welcome. As I mentioned, everyone that's been in your capacity before, and I know usually people that are involved in these types of activities have a lot of homework to do, so after you present your portion, if you need to leave, stand.
Back to school night ran from 7:00 to 9:00 last night at the high school. There was a nice turnout of parents and a run successfully.
Full close closer.
Homecoming this year is going to be on October 1st at 6:30 PM. The theme this year is to support our troops. The public is encouraged to come out to the game and support the bombers as well as the troops. October is also prior to our school month. We will be recognizing all clubs and sports in the high school.
Okay, thank you, Terrence. Next is our parent involvement representatives, Heather Kirshman, welcome.
Thank you. The last meeting, I mean, the first meeting we had this year was on September 13, and there was a couple of discussions. First, we discussed how well the, how back to school had smoothly, that had gone for everyone. There was a couple of discussions about some new policies, and we also assigned the PIC representatives for here until the end of the year.
Thank you very much. Now, we have the attorney's report, Mr. Lembow, do you have any district copies?
Yes, Mr. President, I want to review my report. Lights, camera, action. These words were heard in the brand newly designed, state-of-the-art high school cafeteria last spring. The Sable Memorial High School is proud to be able to showcase its new edition on Channel 12, NJN Network's Classroom Closeup. The Cafe Ladies is set to debut, the new features of the cafeteria, including interviews with both students and staff. A special emphasis was placed on the healthy food choices that are being offered throughout the school year. The program is funded by NJEA to promote innovations and best practices in all parts of our school. You can tune into the NJN Network on September 27th and/or October 2nd and get the bomber experience.
Very nice. Now, Dr. O'Connell, would you please take this review report?
Thank you. Mr. President, Section A, the report. B, finance. Numbers 1 through 12 are our regular resolutions that we run through up to paid cash, that stops on page 4. New resolution number 13 is the installation of a new audio system in the high school auditorium, which will fall under the renovation and addition of the Sable Memorial High School, which will cost $33,500. Any questions with Section B? Sure.
The audio system, was that bid, was that a bid?
No, we received three quotes.
Okay, so this was the lowest of three quotes?
Lowest of three quotes, yes.
Okay. Can you just put that in there, that it was the lowest of three quotes, how it was chosen on here?
Okay.
So it's below the threshold?
Thirty-six thousand, yes. Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't want one. The transfer report, is this, I have two transfer reports?
You have the transfer report and the 1701 report, two different reports.
Okay, what is the, why is there a column, Original Budget for 10% Compensation? What is that for?
That's the required format per the state. You're allowed to transfer up to 10%.
Is that for the year?
Yes, for the year.
Or is that per report for each year?
Any other questions? With none, moving to C. Page 5, number 1, is to rescind an action. Number 2, our employment of part-time power professionals. 3 is a one-to-one power professional. And 4 is our cooperative business education student that will work in the business office. Page 6 are non-certificated professional days, and 6 is a substitute, a few substitutes that are listed there. Any questions with Section C? With none, moving to D. Page 7, we need to amend an end date for a pregnancy child rearing. 2 is a rescind of an approval of a degree status, and those are the individuals, and that's by law. 3 is being withdrawn, okay? There is, it's being withdrawn. Right now, we have a little bit of paperwork issue, we will hopefully put this person back up for the next, for the next meeting. So rather than going through the paperwork, we will pull this, and we will hopefully reappoint. 4 is an extracurricular appointment. 5 are professional days, and that runs from pages 7, 8, and ends on page 9. Number 6 is an in-school suspension person. 7, 8, and 9 are all coaching positions and approvals. Any questions? I'm sorry, 10 are additional substitute teachers. Any questions with Section D? With none, moving to policy. This is Title 1 Parent Involvement Policy, this is what Heather talked about, we went through this at the PIC meeting, this is a requirement of Title 1, that runs pages 10, 11, and 12. Any questions on their policy?
Just explain Title 1 for those who may not know, okay?
Ms. Sutherland?
Title 1 is a portion of the No Child Left Behind or NCLB grant that the district receives as a precursor and a requirement to obtain close to a half a million dollars in Title 1 money this year. There are certain requirements that school districts must comply with, this is one of them. You have to have an annual policy, you have to have a teacher-parent-student compact. Both of these forms, once they're approved by the board tonight, will go up on the district website, it'll be, there'll be a separate section of the website just for Title 1 ASI parents. So they will have all of the particular letters, requirements, access to resources for Title 1 students. Again, you must have this in order to comply with our right to the grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Section F, curriculum. This is special services. Any questions with Section F?
I have a question. Why did, why did the tuition raise for the lifelong learning?
Ms. Duffy? It goes from $36,540 to $460, is that what you're saying?
I think it's inclusive of, okay, extra, yes, why, he sends to the program.
Okay, I apologize for not checking that out soon when I was then asking, giving you a little heads up, and then this way we've all known, okay?
Not a problem. Moving to G, co-curriculum. These are a host of dances at the middle school on page 14, that runs throughout the year. Marching band competitions is number 2 on the bottom of page 14. Top of page 15 is wrestling, boost-a-clunk, and will tricky track, and it usually runs very, very well. Any questions with that section, G? With none, moving to H, support services. WAVE transportation, and transportation contracts, and routing. That runs you from pages 15, 16, 17, up to page 18, which are a few field trips, and ending with the Middlesex Cultural and Heritage Commission trip with the SUES, which Ms. Brady does a great job with. That's number 19. Before I conclude my report, Mr. President, I would like Ms. Seifner, the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, to give a little bit of an overview, because I know a lot of people have some questions about the $710,000 that came out in regard to the federal money. And I will also do the addendum before I do that, okay? Thank you, Mr. Sayak, I've got a little...
$709,942.
Okay, but before I'll do that, Ms., I think you could just wait, I'll just do the addendum. Pull out your addendum, we'll do this quickly. There's a use of building in A, which is the Blue Room, on October 15. C is an employment of a non-certificated individual. D is to amend the previously approved unpaid family leave to an unpaid personal leave. 12 is a resignation of a teacher. Unfortunately, this individual, that's why we have the hole that I just talked about, this person came in and basically worked a few days and has resigned. 13 is an unpaid medical leave for a teacher. G, number 4, is a class of 2013 volleyball tournament. And H is, there was a mistake made, they want two buses rather than one, that's why it's in there twice. So they need to get back, so they need two buses going and two buses coming. And we will add to the discussion the solar referendum.
Dr. O'Connell, on D12, do we have, will we have a replacement in, by the next meeting?
That's our, that's our hope. That's one of the reasons why we're not sure if we were going to place the teacher that was on this list either in the high school or in the middle school. Because we have two openings right now, so we wanted to make sure that we, and I said for right now, we'll pull that person off the list, and then we'll determine whether she's going to go into the high school or the middle school, rather than rescinding.
That individual's on our sub-list already?
Yes, she's subbing right now. Ms. Seifner, you're on.
Okay, you may have read in the newspaper online that about the $268 million that New Jersey applied for federal aid, it's actually the Department of Education for the Education Jobs Act. Well, we found out last night the amount of money that Sable is being allocated, and it's approximately $710,000, okay? But, there's a lot of buts with this. First of all, we're being advised by the Acting Commissioner of Education to wait for more information with details about the federal restrictions on how we can use this money. And there are a great many restrictions apparently on how this money can be used. First of all, the money is receivable for this year, but we cannot adjust the appropriations for the current school year budget. The Acting Commissioner is, I'm quoting from a letter she sent to us, "Please consider reserving this one-time funding for the 2011, 2012 school year if possible. We have until September of 2012 to spend this money." And we have to be very, very careful about what we do with it, because they caution that we have to assume that there will be no additional funds to follow this up. So we don't want to find ourselves in a position where we're funding something that we will not be able to fund in the subsequent years, okay? So, as soon as we know more and we're able to find out more about the restrictions, we'll work with it at that point. But we will apparently have the money, but we have until, we have two years to spend it, okay?
If the board remembers, we had a similar situation about two years ago when we got the stimulus money, the 20% increase, what we were going to do with it, and we decided to put it into the one-term projects of improving the infrastructure, because we didn't think it was going to be sustainable, and we were right. In those districts, they added other programs, and then the state cut the aid, and that's when you had those problems. So, again, we have another opportunity, and it just amazes me with the federal government and that kind of involvement, to send you the money but not tell you how to use it, what you can do with it. They put restrictions on it, and that's another question we have to add. We know we be teachers, we know we want to keep our student enrollment, our class down to a certain number, but we have to really take a look at that. If you hire 10 teachers in 2011, 12, and 12, 13, and you don't get the money, you know, what do you do? So that's something that we really have to take a look at once the... Any indication of the timeline of the follow-on information?
I haven't heard anything.
The Middlesex County Curriculum Council meets next month, and I spoke to the county superintendent's curriculum specialist this morning, they are attending a meeting with the Executive County Superintendent this Friday, and will bring back more guidance and more information regarding this one to our meeting.
So we await guidance. So if you go to newjersey.com, which is an interesting site, and you scroll down, you'll see the link, and you can click on it and choose your local school districts and state by county, and exactly what they got. So it's the districts that got four to five million dollars. I saw a trend there, but I won't guess.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, any more discussion on the agenda for the public on the agenda? If not...
I have a question on this.
Yes, sure.
I don't know the answer, but everything that I read on this money was they were, a lot of it was for rehiring teachers that were laid off, a lot of it doesn't apply to our district. How can, how can you do that without changing the appropriation number, having to do it this year? How does that work?
That's a good question.
Well, that's, that's the part we're trying to figure out, because my, my understanding is that you cannot increase your appropriations.
So have to rehire, not...
That's why we, that's why they're telling you, don't start jumping and going, wait for the guidance, because there has to be some way to allow you to use this money without increasing your budget. So it's early, and that's why you have to be careful. You're reading things, people already making assumptions. I know one, my association put out, that this may be designated to a separate fund. Will it be a separate fund that has a matching revenue and appropriation? We don't know at this point in time.
Is that all under the guidelines of the state, in terms of the prohibition on increasing the appropriation and the separate fund? Is that all state?
That's... No. Obviously, if it goes into our Fund 20, which is a special revenue, for every revenue you increase, you get the offsetting appropriation. First message out today was they're not doing it in that manner. So we're waiting for the guidance, because our budget is struck, and you can't increase your budget once it's struck, because of revenue.
There lies the dilemma. We didn't, we didn't release any teachers through the budget requirements, so who can rehire? So as soon as you can hire teachers, you know, because that's what the intention of the federal government's bill is, it's a jobs bill.
And that's probably why they're recommending waiting till next year, putting it into a reserve and saving it for next year, and you're really most likely hiring the people next year this year.
Perhaps this is an incidence where repenting is better than asking permission.
Don't be surprised if you lose state aid somewhere, somewhere around here.
If you lose state aid by $709,000...
Yes.
I have a feeling we're going to get a cut in about just that amount.
Hey, look, we've been watching this dog for only show long enough, so that's what's going to happen. So it's probably wise to put it in interest earning account.
That's good.
Okay, now, there's no other discussion from the board on the agenda, I'd like to open up to the public, if any questions or comments on the agenda?
Mr. Sayak, delegate.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet. No?
No. So we're going to open up to the public for any comments on the agenda, please be mindful, I will open up to the public again for any decisions made before the board. Right now, any comments or questions on the agenda, or what Ms. Seifner just spoken about? If not, I'll close the public session on the agenda items, and I'll seek approval to post and file the superintendent's...
I move the superintendent's report in its entirety.
Okay, any roll call votes?
Mr. Backler?
Item number 8, yes, and I'll allow all their items.
What item would it be?
Finance number 8.
Oh, okay. Finance number 8.
Ms. Backler?
Yes.
Mr. Beshad?
Yes.
Ms. Bruno Recuya?
Yes.
Mr. Sayak?
Yes.
Ms. Lembow?
Yes.
Mr. Backler?
Yes.
Ms. Berto Recuya?
Yes.
Mr. Sayak?
Yes.
Ms. Lembow?
Yes.
Ms. Seifner?
Yes.
If not, who will call votes? Mr. President? Thank you. Mr. President? Section A, the report. B, finance. Numbers 1 through 12 are our regular resolutions that we run through up to paid cash, that stops on page 4. New resolution number 13 is the installation of a new audio system in the high school auditorium, which will fall under the renovation and addition of the Sable Memorial High School, which will cost $33,500. Any questions with Section B? Sure.
The audio system, was that bid, was that a bid?
No, we received three quotes.
Okay, so this was the lowest of three quotes?
Lowest of three quotes, yes.
Okay. Can you just put that in there, that it was the lowest of three quotes, how it was chosen on here?
Okay.
So it's, it's below the threshold?
Thirty-six thousand, yes. Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't want one. The transfer report, is this, I have two transfer reports?
You have the transfer report and the 1701 report, two different reports.
Okay, what is the, why is there a column, Original Budget for 10% Compensation? What is that for?
That's the required format per the state. You're allowed to transfer up to 10%.
Is that for the year?
Yes, for the year.
Or is that per report for each year?
Any other questions? With none, moving to C. Page 5, number 1, is to rescind an action. Number 2, our employment of part-time power professionals. 3 is a one-to-one power professional. And 4 is our cooperative business education student that will work in the business office. Page 6 are non-certificated professional days, and 6 is a substitute, a few substitutes that are listed there. Any questions with Section C? With none, moving to D. Page 7, we need to amend an end date for a pregnancy child rearing. 2 is a rescind of an approval of a degree status, and those are the individuals, and that's by law. 3 is being withdrawn, okay? There is, it's being withdrawn. Right now, we have a little bit of paperwork issue, we will hopefully put this person back up for the next, for the next meeting. So rather than going through the paperwork, we will pull this, and we will hopefully reappoint. 4 is an extracurricular appointment. 5 are professional days, and that runs from pages 7, 8, and ends on page 9. Number 6 is an in-school suspension person. 7, 8, and 9 are all coaching positions and approvals. Any questions? I'm sorry, 10 are additional substitute teachers. Any questions with Section D? With none, moving to policy. This is Title 1 Parent Involvement Policy, this is what Heather talked about, we went through this at the PIC meeting, this is a requirement of Title 1, that runs pages 10, 11, and 12. Any questions on their policy?
Just explain Title 1 for those who may not know, okay?
Ms. Sutherland?
Title 1 is a portion of the No Child Left Behind or NCLB grant that the district receives
On the bottom of page fourteen, top of page fifteen is wrestling boost the club annual tricky track and it usually runs very, very well. Any questions with that section? G with none, moving to H. Support services, waived transportation and transportation contracts and routing. That runs you from pages fifteen, sixteen, seventeen up to page eighteen, which are a few field trips and ending with the Middlesex Cultural and Heritage Commission trip with the S U E S, which Ms. Brady does a great job with. That's number nineteen. Before I conclude my report, Mr. President, I would like Ms. Seitner, the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, to give a little bit of an overview because I know a lot of people have some questions about the seven hundred and ten thousand dollars that came out in regard to the federal money. And I will also do the addendum before I do that. Okay, thank you, Mr. Seitner. I've got a little...
Seven hundred nine thousand nine hundred forty-two.
Okay, but before I'll do that, just wait, I'll just do the addendum. If you pull out your addendum, we'll do this quickly. There's a use of building in A, which is the Blue Room on October fifteenth. C is an employment of a non-certificated individual. D is to amend the previously approved unpaid family leave to an unpaid personal leave. Twelve is a resignation of a teacher. Unfortunately, this individual, that's why we have the hole that I just talked about, this person came in and basically worked a few days and has resigned. Thirteen is an unpaid medical leave for a teacher. G, number four, is a class of two thousand and thirteen volleyball tournament. And H is, there was a mistake made, they want two buses rather than one, that's why it's in there twice. So they need to get back. So they need two buses going and two buses coming. And we will add to our discussion the solar referendum.
Dr. Arpano, on D twelve, do we have, will we have a replacement by the next meeting?
That's our, that's our hope. That's one of the reasons why we're not sure if we were going to place the teacher that was on this list either in high school or in middle school.
Okay.
Because we have two openings right now. So we wanted to make sure that we, and I said for right now, we'll pull that person off the list and then we'll determine whether she's going to go into the high school or the middle school rather than rescinding.
That individual's on our sub-list already?
Yes, she's subbing right now.
Perfect.
Ms. Seitner, you're on.
Okay, you may have read in the newspaper online that about the two hundred and sixty-eight million dollars that New Jersey applied for federal aid, it's actually the Department of Education for the Education Jobs Act. Well, we found out last night the amount of money that Sayoril is being allocated and it's approximately seven hundred and ten thousand dollars, okay? But, there's a lot of buts with this. First of all, we're being advised by the Acting Commissioner of Education to wait for more information with details about the federal restrictions on how we can use this money. There are a great many restrictions apparently on how this money can be used. First of all, the money is receivable for this year, but we cannot adjust the appropriations for the current school year budget. The Acting Commissioner is quoting from a letter she sent to us, "Please consider reserving this one-time funding for the two thousand and eleven, two thousand school year if possible." We have until September of two thousand and twelve to spend this money. And we have to be very, very careful about what we do with it because they caution that we have to assume that there will be no additional funds to follow this up. So we don't want to find ourselves in a position where we're funding something that we will not be able to fund in the subsequent years, okay? So as soon as we know more and we're able to find out more about the restrictions, we'll work with it at that point. But we will apparently have the money, but we have until, we have two years to spend it, okay?
If the board remembers, we had a similar situation about two years ago when we got the stimulus money, the twenty percent increase, what we were going to do with it, and we decided to put it into the one-term projects of improving the infrastructure because we didn't think it was going to be sustainable and we were right. In those districts, they added other programs and then the state cut the aid and that's when you have those problems. So again, we have another opportunity and it just amazes me with the federal government and that kind of problem, to send you the money but not tell you how to use it, what you can do with it. They put restrictions on it and that's another question we have to add. We know we need teachers, we know we want to keep our student enrollment or class down to a certain number, but we have to really take a look at that. If you hire ten teachers in two thousand and eleven, twelve, and twelve thirteen, you don't get the money, you know, what do you do? So that's something that we really have to take a look at once the... Any indication of the timeline of the follow-on information?
I haven't heard anything.
The Middlesex County Curriculum Council meets next month and I spoke to the county superintendent's curriculum specialist this morning. They are attending a meeting with the Executive County Superintendent this Friday and will bring back more guidance and more information regarding this on the tour meeting.
So we await guidance. If you go to newjersey.com, which is an interesting site, and you scroll down, you'll see the link and you can click on it and choose your local school districts and state by county and exactly what they got. So it's the districts that got four to five million dollars. I saw a trend there, but I won't guess. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, any more discussion on the agenda for the public on the agenda? If not...
I have a question on this.
Yes, sure.
I don't know the answer, but everything that I read on this money was they were, a lot of it was for rehiring teachers that really, a lot of it doesn't apply to our district. How can, how can you do that without changing the appropriation number, having to do it this year? How does that work?
That's a good question.
Well, that's, that's the part we're trying to figure out because my, my understanding is that you cannot increase your appropriations.
So have to rehire link up.
That's why we, that's why they're telling you, don't start jumping and gone, wait for the guidance because there has to be some way to allow you to use this money without increasing your budget. So it's early and that's why you have to be careful. You're reading things, people already making assumptions. I know one, my association put out that this may be designated to a separate fund. Will it be a separate fund that has a matching revenue and appropriation? We don't know at this point in time.
Is that all under the guidelines of the state in terms of the prohibition on increasing the appropriation and the separate fund? Is that all state?
That's... No. Obviously, if it goes into our Fund Twenty, which is a special revenue, for every revenue we increase, you get the offsetting appropriation. First message out today was they're not doing it in that manner. So we're waiting for the guidance because our budget is struck and you can't increase your budget once it's struck because of revenue.
There lies the dilemma. We didn't, we didn't release any teachers through the budget requirements, so who can rehire? Right. So as soon as you can hire teachers, you know, because that's what the intention of the federal government's bill is, it's a jobs.
And that's probably why they're recommending waiting till next year, putting it into a reserve and saving it for next year and you're really most likely hiring the people next year.
Perhaps this is an incidence where repenting is better than asking permission.
Don't be surprised if you lose state aid somewhere.
I'm going to lose state aid by seven hundred nine thousand...
Yes.
I have, I have a feeling we're going to get a cut in about just that amount.
We've been watching this dog for only so long enough, so that's what's going to happen. So it's probably wise to put it in interest earning account.
That's good.
Okay, now there's no other discussion from the board on the agenda. I'd like to open up to the public, any comments or comments on the agenda?
Mr. Seitner, delegate.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet. Aren't there? No?
No. So we're going to open up to the public for any comments on the agenda. Please do mind while we open up to the public again for any business that may come before the board. Right now, any comments or questions on the agenda or what Ms. Seitner just spoken about? If not, I'll close the public session on the agenda items and I'll seek approval to post and file the superintendent's...
I move the superintendent's report in its entirety.
Okay, any roll call votes?
Mr. Baffert.
Item number eight, yes, and I'll allow all their items.
What item would it be?
Finance number eight.
Oh, okay. Finance number eight.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno Rakuia.
Yes.
Mr. Seitner.
Yes.
Mr. Lumbow.
Yes.
And Mrs. MacKillop.
I need to stay on the chat, there's a chat on the bills.
May doubt her.
May doubt her.
It was...
I'll figure that out.
Yes, my answer is yes to all. Okay, at this time, background information. Okay, if you recall, sometime in August, we had a discussion about the high school graduation ceremony and the last two years we had a movement inside in our facilities, in athletic inside. Some folks came up and I think made their comments and I think the board decided that we would continue to have the graduation ceremony on the field, although permitting, but we wanted to have a suitable backup plan. The board had discussed the possible use of the Faith Fellowship Room and the board had signed me to task him to inquire about that. I spoke with Reverend Bull today and he's certainly agreeable to that, if that's what we want to do as an alternate location. We talked about the benefits of that, more than enough parking and certainly a big enough room to, to house everybody. So he asked me a question, he stumped a dummy. He's a very nice guy, very personal. He stumped a dummy and asked me, well, when is the high school graduation? So, so I had my laptop, I mean, I was looking on the, on the district website and I looked at the high school website, when is the high school graduation date? Does anybody know?
It depends because you have, if it snows, it'll be later in the year.
In the June.
What?
Okay, that's, if everything happens, if we don't lose any days, it's going to be June seventeenth. He's trying to pin down a certain day because he has a schedule and he wants to know what it is, so he can block that off. So, so I guess the question I have is, when's the high school graduation?
Don't have a date yet.
We don't have a date.
Somewhere between seventeenth and the twenty-fourth.
Right, but obviously, we, if he needs to block that out, we can't ask him to block that a week. I mean, and I realize what you're saying, we don't know what the weather is, so we may be, is it possible that we be stuck with whatever date we pick?
Well, I think we need to talk about this a little bit more, maybe in committee or whatever, because you're also talking about contractual issues and so on and so forth. So, you know, like, for example, let's say school ends on the seventeenth and we pick, like, some schools will pick June twenty-eighth because they want to make sure that they get in the required amount of days. Subsequently, you know, some schools wait a week, week and a half to do their graduation.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we do that in order to, to secure this place. I mean, I...
But I'm not so sure how we could do it other than that. I mean, you're basically rolling the dice by saying, if we're, if we, let's say, God, we got a real bad winter, we could go deep into June. I mean, we're at the seventeenth, we could say, okay, if we do five days of, of snow, we have to go to a hundred and eighty day no matter what. Right now, we're at the hundred and eighty second day. So whatever that date is, June twen, June seventeenth, could easily go to June twenty-fourth, easily.
So if everything goes well, June seventeenth.
I'm just...
So when I speak to the Reverend DeMar, you tell him to pray for no bad weather.
Let me tell you something, the Reverend could do that.
I think we also, I think we also talked on this about possibly surveying the students and the parents to determine what they would prefer. Because I know, I mean, I'm confident that there's got to be some students out there who would rather sit in the gym on bomber country, in bomber country than at the Faith Fellowship Church. I don't know if that's a majority, I don't know if it's a minority, but I'd like to get some feedback.
Or are you at the last two graduation ceremonies in the gym?
Mr. McInerney?
Okay.
I'm just, I want to reflect it for the record that I think we need to get some input from the community and from the students with regard to how we should proceed this.
And I'm okay with that.
I like the idea, I think it's got potential, but I don't think we should do something just without any type of input.
I agree with the student input, absolutely. It's their graduation, let's get their opinion.
Maybe Mr. O'Connor would like to chair a good servant. I believe I should love to.
You should have went home early. I don't think... I don't want to put Mr. O'Connor on the spot.
I, I think what we'll do is perhaps Mr. Brown, you know, if that's something that he can, you know, certainly opportunities within high school, home teachers can pull that type of thing. I know when parents came, everybody adamant about the fact that if the weather is fine, do it on the ground for the high school. And Mr. Bishada is an advocate of that as well. Now, this is just a contingency plan and I'm looking from, I'm talking from a parent's perspective. Do I want to be able to get the whole family to see the graduation in a nice air-conditioned place and has really big screen TVs? Or do I want to sit in the gym and sweat and the microphones don't work and all these other things? So that's just the, just, just throwing that out there. But I don't have any problem getting input, we certainly have time to do that and, you know, I'll go whatever the... I mean, I'm always guaranteed a seat, I hope to. So, okay, enough said about that. Now, last thing I want to say is about Sable Day. Mrs. Trapp. I, I think it was unanimous decision by all who was at Sable Day. Some of us were very obvious and we noticed that we were the only ones without a tent.
Not in the budget.
I'm willing to donate a tent because I think it was, it was very hot and we may have one somewhere.
We have one in nine.
But I think that we could add that to the checklist for Sable Day and to add a tent. That would be a good...
We have one in nine. What's your problem?
Okay.
Fifty-nine dollars. Fifty-nine dollars.
Okay, no problem, we weren't happy to donate that. Okay. Background information, delegate to the New Jersey School Board Association. Mrs. Seitner took part of what I wanted to say today with regard to the money. The other piece is that New Jersey School Boards is basically focused right now on preparing boards for the upcoming budget season in terms of the two percent and how to educate boards in terms of dealing with the two percent cap, which we're all going to be under. They're also giving testimony before the New Jersey State Legislature and various committees regarding unfunded mandates and what we can possibly take off that would help boards save some additional funding. I know the topic of special education came up again with regard to a recent state statute which was enacted, which basically, in the event any parent decides to challenge the placement of a special needs child by the school district, basically the burden of proof falls upon the parent, falls upon the school district in order to prove why they feel that particular placement is adequate. Typically, when you bring suit against a party, the burden of proof is upon the party that is bringing suit. This law was put in place and basically, you know, the district is automatically assumed guilty as opposed to being assumed innocent and the professional. So they were advocating for that particular law to be changed. So again, a lot of stuff with regard to the budget, no new worry on the Commissioner of Education yet. But it used to be this school, there's been a change at the parent, now the parent back to the school. They're not bringing it back to the school. The burden of proof initially used to be on the parent.
Right.
Now they brought it to the school district. But wasn't that decided by the Supreme Court? I believe it was, yes. Who overruled the Supreme Court? I think they're looking to basically change state law. That's the question. Because there's a statute in place right now that basically says the burden of proof is on the school district to prove that the educational placement is the best barrier-free education for the child. Mr. Duffy, you go first.
Yes, it's, it's a burden is on the school district, but Mr. McInerney is right, it was previously on the parent, but before that, it was on the school district. So they changed it and then they changed it back again and now they're looking to change it again.
You know why?
Yes.
You know why? So their parents will lose word.
Yes.
That's what it was.
Yes, but, right, and the, it's just a very expensive way to, and really, as you said, just in, in any other action, it's exactly the opposite. And, you know, for the school district to carry that burden, it's long, it's arduous, and very difficult.
And these are the decisions that mandated on us to drive board members crazy, like people realize this, this is the things we have to do. So, very good. Any discussion items? Nancy, you want to talk about the upcoming solar?
Yes, I met with Joseph DeCarrick today, we went through the final part of the solar referendum. We included for submission down to the state, the all its school univentilators and controls, so he finalized the application. Early this afternoon, applications started to come out of the state with state assigned numbers, eight, I saw eight of them today. So DeCarrick and Ravino has been doing the process of submitting and putting things in place. The one thing we did speak about is finalizing numbers and it appears at this point in time that a December referendum is not likely because of the situation down at the state. Although plans are being reviewed, numbers are being issued, dollar amounts are not being associated to grants or debt service because of the turmoil down at the state at this point. There's not much confidence at this point that a December referendum would be possible. We will continue to push, do our best, but they are moving ahead and again, when the board is ready, in whatever fashion you want to move ahead, he is available to start doing presentations. Obviously, those presentations will be limited with financial information, which is probably the most important part.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't advocate doing the presentation. So when, when we move it to the right, when is the next possible opportunity for that?
January was the next date, so we're going to closely watch that and again, it's all depending on what comes out of the state.
What region's going on, the referendum in December?
Yes, they're out in December, they...
They start early.
They, they've had, been working a year ahead of us then. I mean, if they have state lands, debt service, they've been out there for a long time then. We will continue to watch it and just got to keep our fingers crossed then at this point in time.
Any other discussion items before we open up the public?
I have one other thing. I had heard, and maybe Mrs. Brady knows about this because I don't see Mrs., I don't see Mrs. Giacantos, but at the homecoming, there's something going on also that we're looking to bring in servicemen for homecoming? Do you know anything about that?
I'm wondering.
No, I, I think what it was is that Mr. Brown had suggested that he recognized veterans that are there, having come out to the field at halftime and then take a picture.
I'm never to be honored, I have a time. I believe Mr. O'Connor was talking a little bit about that, you know, that we're going to do that at homecoming and Mr. Brown was trying to, you know, foster as much we can with the veterans. So that would be one of the things that he'd like to do during homecoming.
Yeah, and I'll talk to Mr. Brown, you know, it might be appropriate if we have a color guard for maybe the VFW or the Merritt Legion during, you know, the presentation or whatever he wants to do that we can support on it. This was Mr. Brown's initiative, he had sent an email to myself and Dr. Arpano with some thoughts, but that's what it depends. I think that's up to Mr. Brown how he wants to do that. But I certainly support that. Mr. McInerney?
Yes.
With regard to the solar energy, getting back to that topic for a second, I know years ago, we used to have permission through state law where if a project were to pay for itself, such as an energy retrofit, solar energy would certainly fall into that category where the amount that you're bonding for would basically be offset by the savings, that state law permitted you to just go ahead and do it, which is no longer permitted.
Right, but you also have the problem that those offsets are the state grant. That's what you're saying. It wasn't just a solar program that gave you all of your savings.
Correct, but what I'm, what I'm asking is, would it be advisable to us to perhaps talk to our state legislators to see if we can get legislation through to put that provision back into state law? I don't know in this climate how it would go. You know, on one hand, you're taking away, you know, the power to vote from the public, on the other hand, it's a net zero cost over the long time you're spending, over the long term, you're spending extra money for an election. Would it be advisable for us to speak to them to see if we can get something passed through the legislature for specific solar energy projects that would allow us to do that and go ahead if we can document that the savings will offset the cost?
But they still have to come up with a number for the...
Correct, but that would save us at least if it were to go through from going out for a, for a separate referendum. Does that make sense or? You want to do that?
I can, if that's...
Make the contact.
I can make a contact if that's the board's pleasure.
It's not going to hurt.
That's the board's pleasure? I don't see a downside. Anybody else have any?
Okay.
I'll make the contact, I'll report back.
Anything else? If not, I'll open up to the public, any business that may come before the board, please come up, state your name and address for the record. Anybody in public wish to speak?
Hi, Charlie Juneman, Expers Lane. I'm up here because I have a child at the middle school, seventh grade, and I have one who just started the U E S. So that being said, I thought I pretty much knew what to expect of the U E S, we've been through there already. He had certain things he figured he would do, and one of them was fourth grade instrumental music. He was all excited, he was going to take trombone like his big brother. And we got there and we waited and no letter was coming home and then we found out that it had been cut. And I had heard there were no programs cut and there was no staff cut and yet instrumental music no longer exists and I'm told it's because there's a staff shortage in the building for coverage of lunch duty.
Dr. Arpano, please address now. That's, what happened was the, the numbers in the science classes and math classes exploded in grade four and they needed to hire another teacher, not so much just to cover lunch, is that we needed the other teachers to lower the class sizes in the other, in the other areas. Unfortunately, we had to take, either worry about math and science, and I hate to say this, we had the sort of triage and then we made basically the instrumental, we had an extra art teacher that, and music teacher that would take on some of that responsibility. So unfortunately, when the budget was cut, and it should have been, you know, unfortunately, we should have sort of sent the letter home, I did say that to Mr. Agalies and he basically apologized, but the bottom line is, is that we, we had no other choice. We just, you know, we had the, the numbers in, I believe in fourth grade or fifth, what is it, fourth grade, went through the roof. We, we, I think we got about sixty more children in that, in that area. So what we had to do is we literally had to hire another teacher for that. And in the U E S, we actually hired, you know, two teachers over the course between the summer and between the beginning of the school year. And I just couldn't let the numbers go over thirty-one, thirty-two children. And as a result, it affected the specials because, you know, we, we had to make a decision. Unfortunately, I said that to Mr. McInerney, we're making tough decisions now and unfortunately, it's starting to affect the fifty, sixty, or seventy children that were taking the instrumental. Someone like you, I, you know, I, I know you do a ton for this district and your, and your kids are great kids. Not that every kid isn't, but I felt very bad about it, but at the same time, and even tied to hearing this, is that if we can't pass budgets, this is the beginning of the bleeding. Unfortunately, we talk about redistricting, I have to commend the board, we're doing everything we possibly can to try to deal with this overcrowded condition. However, we could, we could, we could make the best redistricting plan in the world, this is going to be the same concept, you're going to have open classrooms, but you're not going to have teachers to put into them. You know, and this is a shell game, the seven hundred and ten thousand dollars, and I think the S E A as well as the administration would agree with that. And, you know, that, you know, we're, we're moving money from one part to another, but at the same time, are we going to get cut with state aid and so on and so forth? And what compounds this district unfortunately, Charlie, is that we don't pass budgets. And that's not a knock, it's a fact. And, and not to mention that the, that the U E S went up about sixty, seventy kids from last year. So we never expected that. If it didn't go up, you still would have instrumental music. I know it doesn't make you feel any better and I apologize for that, but really, that's what it came down to. I know Ms. Brady, she's shaking her head, yes, but I know we did have this discussion. I didn't really know how it was going to affect when they said to me, we need another teacher, and then I'm on top of them saying, you can't have an art teacher, you can't have a music teacher because we have no more mu, we have no more money, you know? And at the same time, we hired, believe it or not, about three more teachers than we did at the end of last year just because of the sheer numbers. Whether the kindergartens at Truman School that blew through the roof, you know, third grade, I believe at Eisenhower, you know, we had, I believe we were over thirty kids at Eisenhower in the third grade, you know, these are things that we, that, you know, we, we were expecting, but unfortunately, it's now having an effect on things like instrumental music. And next year, whether, you know, whatever we decide to do, we're going to have to hire art teachers and music teachers because when you redistrict, you're relocating children and as a result, you have to have the specials and so on and so forth. So there's a really, a lot that we still need to really talk about. And Mr. Agalies and I really agonized over this for a while and sort of fell through the cracks that we didn't send a notice home. And, and I apologize, I'm the superintendent, that should come from my office. And, and all due respect, we, we, you know, Mr. Agalies and I were talking about and he, he said, you know, he felt real bad about it and when he came up initially, I think it came up in the beginning of the year, I think you had mentioned it and it, I don't I don't know, it was on Facebook or something or other, and, and it was going back and forth, but don't, don't get me wrong, I have no idea what Facebook is, but I heard it, I heard that people were saying that it was going back and forth, and I knew it wasn't just one parent or two parent, I knew there was, there was quite a few parents.
Let me just add, Mr. Jeff, and I, I saw some of those, those comments from parents, and I just wanna, and I'm speaking for myself, not the rest of the board, they certainly can speak for themselves, that there was a, a thought that, you know, in this district, we don't lend as much weight to the arts as we may sports or other things, and I'm speaking for myself, and as long as I sit in this center seat, I'm very big supporter of the arts, because there's indisputable studies, that show that students that are involved at the early age of music do better academically. And that's no argument, anybody in education says differently, they're, they're lying, okay, that's a fact. Now, when I saw those emails, I asked Dr. Afana, and I was concerned with a couple of things, you know, when one, we're trying to build up a music program in a high school, and the way not to do that is, is not, you know, he understands that. And I think what was made here was an educational decision, you know, you have a limited amount of resources, what are you gonna do? Are you gonna teach math, are you gonna teach instrumental? The good thing is, is that we will be able to start those students in February, they just won't have the opportunity to do it in fourth grade. I know that's no consolation if you're a fourth grader.
They're all a year behind now.
Right. And, and the thing I felt bad too, and I mentioned to Dr. Afana, he agreed, you know, certainly this is not an issue that would be the board's decision, these are things that we've done with the principals, and a lot of times, we hear about those things, and parents express some concern, especially someone like you, who's been here, who's been in this seat, is the big representative that's been all over, and I felt bad that you have to hear that from your kid coming home, versus officially from the-
That bothers me.
I gotcha. And, you know, and, you know, we do a lot of district, I will make no excuses for anyone, um, you know, that, that should have been a better way to do that, but, the arts are important, and, I mean, I, I enjoy them myself, the theater and all those things, and it's very important, and that's what makes a good school district, not just academic test scores, is, is what is out there for the other students that are creative, and, you know, you know, we, you know, we, maybe we have the, you know, the next Einstein sitting in our chemistry class, maybe we have the next musician, the next Bon Jovi, if you will, sitting in the music classroom. You know, and that's very important to one's education, it's just not about math and science, it's about everything else. You know, it's about life skills, it's about the arts, and just think about how we would be, we didn't have any of those. You know, I understand.
Is there any chance with the money that was just given to us, to reinstate it?
What a good example you used, that I would think, and once we can set that out, I'm mistaken.
If that would happen, that would be great.
There's no doubt, you know, since I've been on the board, and Dr. Afana, and any other boy, I'm correct or wrong, I, I don't recall hiring additional teachers. I know we replaced each, the very time the budget gets cut, and I go across to the other side of town, and I talk to those folks, you know, and it's, you know, I, I feel like sometimes I'm playing chess with monkey, but, they, you know, they don't understand, that you keep cutting the budget, I don't hire teachers, but I get sixty additional students in the UES. You know, and we're still building, okay, and, and that's a problem for us, so what are we gonna do? Okay? And that, use of that money, if we, if we can't use that money to put teachers back in the classroom, to bring programs like that, I don't know what to use that money for. Send it back, if we can't use it.
I, I know there's a discussion, and it's, it's, it doesn't pit us into two groups, but it makes the instrumental parents, and the chorus parents, and the arts parents feel that we fall a little bit below the sports level of interest in town.
Well, that's why it was very important, that when we built this, this into this high school, we put that one point one million dollar auto-tape field here, we also put a heck of a music studio there. And that was the thinking, because if your son or daughter plays an instrument, they are no more important in this town, to this school district, than the one that plays football. You all pay taxes, you're all in this town together. And that's always been my feeling, and not everybody's gonna want to play football. Somebody would rather play an instrument, you know? So, you know, when you're sixty, sixty-five years old, you're not gonna be playing football, you certainly may still be playing an instrument. Okay, and those are the things that we as a board have to make a decision, we have limited resources. This was strictly an educational decision, and perhaps wasn't executed the best way of anything. So, and I, I agree with that.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public wish to speak?
Hi, Renee, Fourth Black and Bush, eighty-seventh Harding Avenue. Um, first, a question about, uh, the solar panel, I was here at the meeting, and saw the presentation, but it wasn't clear to me, so, looking for clarification here, that, is that project simply to fund the replacement of the roofs, or are we looking to actually generate revenue?
Good question.
At this point in time, the proposal that we saw from our architect, would include replacing roofs, including solar panel on main buildings, and, well, based on the forecast that they used, um, they used, um, thirty-four percent debt service, and I believe, um, eighty percent of market value for the S-Rex, which is the revenue stream, it would work out to be a break-even point. The possibility of producing additional revenue is definitely there, because the S-Rex could sell at more than eighty percent of the market value. At his, at the time we presented to the board, they, ninety-two or ninety-three percent, but he used a, a number of eighty percent. So there is additional revenue, but any revenue that is generated, has to go back to the taxpayers.
And the referendum that we were trying to push for December, that was gonna be an additional cost of forty K, correct? So, we avoid that cost now.
To do the referendum. Well, we, we'll move it to January. The only way we can save the money-
But it would be in a regular vote, would it not? So we're not doing an additional-
If we move it to April, we, we'd solve in the April election process. Okay? If we do in January, we're just shifting the course from December to January. And if you recall at the meeting, that was the question I asked, about the revenue stream, because S-Rex, it's like a commodity, it's like if you're selling oil or anything else, you know, that, that price fluctuates. And that's why the only way to do this, and that was my concern, is now, Woodbridge is going out for referendum, once everybody starts putting solar panels, and every district, and every commercial building has solar panels, that commodity's gonna drop, it's a supply and demand issue. And that was, that was my concern. Last thing we wanted to do is, is go out there, new roofs, new solar panels in there, but we didn't, it cost us money.
Okay, and then the architect, um, we're paying one point two million plus cost for retaining him, is that correct?
Incorrect. The ten thousand eight hundred, there's a ten thousand eight hundred cost to do the pre-referendum work, that's drawing, a schematic drawing, submittals to the state and all, and if the referendum passes, then it's one point two million dollars for its services, and the only thing above and beyond that would be reimbursable expenses for printing, and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on, uh, to the next topic I'd like to bring up, and I think there's been a lot said about it already, you had mentioned the kindergarten at Truman, um, talking about how class sizes are, they're increasing, they're decreasing, um, numbers are going through the roof, we're talking about redistricting, um, getting teachers back in the classroom, but ultimately, are we even gonna have classrooms, are we gonna have enough room? And, my children are in elementary school, so I'm just starting to begin this whole escapade of losing them, uh, but, in my eyes, it seems like there's not a whole lot of long-term thinking, it's a lot of Band-Aids. Doing the best you can to put some Band-Aids on some situations. So, what is the plan to-
Good question. Um, Dr. Afana, mind if I jump, you wanna, go ahead, you want paper, scissors?
How about both of you?
I chaired, I chaired a committee, um, we met last week, and it was myself, Mrs. Bruno, Mrs. Batko, and Mr. Zeigler, sorry. And I put this committee together called the Redistricting Committee, because it's an issue that we have. But I, I'm not gonna divulge the details of it, because it's, it's still in discussion, but we work with some assumptions. Number one is, number one priority is board's class size. Again, I mentioned studies before, there's a direct correlation between the number of kids in the class, how, no arguments, okay? We have overcrowding in certain schools, certainly Eisenhower, and I think it was Truman. So we looked at different options, a couple of assumptions we went into. First assumption is that whatever we do, there's gonna be people that will feel disenfranchised, because we have room in other buildings, okay? We have room in other buildings, okay? Most of our elementary schools are smaller buildings, older buildings, there's less square footage in the classroom, okay? You have a shortage of teachers, all those things. We looked at all these possible things, what can we do? We certainly looked at things adding on to a school. I know this board is a little gun-shy of construction, but I feel we're very versed in building big buildings, and, and, and I have the, the secret weapon is putting the hard hat on Mr. Rashado, and he will be leading that instruction project, so I feel pretty confident that we will, will have issue. Um, you, you look at schools like Eisenhower, if you look at Eisenhower's footprint, there's a small percentage of the lots that's on. Certainly, you can add on to that, you could add on to other buildings. Um, or you can utilize the space that you have in other buildings, and that's what we're looking at. Looking at what to do, that is not a Band-Aid, but a long-term solution, um, that's gonna be minimal cost to the districts, okay? So that may entail, that may entail leaving some students, and of course, when that happens, um, there are people that are gonna have concern with that effect, okay? But there's only, in my mind, three possibilities. You're gonna build a new building, you're gonna increase your infrastructure, okay? Or you're going to relocate students, okay? Or you're not gonna do anything. Uh, when you have schools that don't have these places, it doesn't make a difference if you hire more teachers, in all fashion, put it in. And those are the types of things. We should have an answer, a month or so down the road, the committee wants to get together again, we want to get all kinds of information of where students are coming from, another issue is-
Tax things.
All those things, and it's, it's, it's a pretty involved process, um, that we're